School Board of the Center Grove Community School Corporation. We're very grateful that each of you have attended with us this evening and we are respectful servants of this school corporation and we really enjoy our position and we love the community. So, thank you for that. We develop knowledgeable, confident, and responsible citizens through the inspiration and innovative learning opportunities. At this time, I'd like for you to join us as we have the National Anthem and this evening we have Colt Seiner and Kaiden O'Haver.
I want you two guys come over here. You're not singing the National Anthem, you're just gonna do the pledge for us, so come on over this way, guys. So, just to first off on these two guys, obviously Walnut Grove is not open yet, but we have two, come on this side, the guys. We have two fine young men entering third grade at Walnut Grove. I think they would probably pass as best friends right now because they play basketball, football, baseball, same Pro Bowl team for Center Grove and same Pro Bowl, or Center Grove baseball team, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So Colt loves math and drawing, but he hates polos. Is that, he hates polos and he's wearing one tonight for us. Kaiden, he is a state finalist in wrestling, so he's bringing some wrestling skills to him as well. These two guys also have sixth grade sisters. Kaiden's mom works at the high school as a psychologist. His dad's joining us tonight, Matt O'Haver over there, and then we also have Mr. Seiner and Mrs. Seiner, they are both employees with Inside the District. So these two guys are our first representatives for Walnut Grove, giving us, doing the pledge for us. So we, we thank them for attending tonight. So I want you guys to step over here.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. I think Mrs. Toomey has something for you as well. Thank you.
Were you afraid you were gonna have to sing the National Anthem? Thank you so much. Thank you for the parents and the administration being here representing Walnut Grove. At this point, we will adopt the agenda and I would like to hear a motion for that.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any discussion or comments? Okay, motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Recognitions and presentations?
There are none tonight. Next on the agenda would be the public comments regarding the agenda.
Okay, all right. Public comments regarding the agenda items at this time?
We don't wanna read that.
At the top?
Yeah.
Persons desiring to address the board concerning a scheduled public agenda item must register before the start of the meeting. Registration will close five minutes before the scheduled start of the meeting. Each person's statement may not exceed three minutes. If several people have indicated their desire to speak, the time limit may be reduced in order to allow more people the opportunity to speak. No more than fifteen minutes will be allotted total for public participation.
Mr. Russell's gonna be here.
Yes, yes, three. All right. Okay, Beth Haven.
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey and members of the board. Mr. Russell, are you timing me? Okay, well, everybody hold on. My name is Beth Haven and I am one of the co-presidents of the United Teachers Association of Center Grove. I am a veteran, sixth grade language arts teacher at Center Grove Middle School North, and perhaps most importantly for this meeting, a longtime resident of White River Township. I mentioned these three roles of my life for a reason. They all have shaped my decision to support the referendum which is on the agenda tonight. As a veteran teacher, I have devoted a large part of my adult life to education and I have loved every minute of it. I would agree with those who would say that the children of today are very much like the children of thirty and forty years ago. They are goofy, they're silly, they want to be loved. But, the children of today face some very different fears from those thirty and forty years ago. And those fears are displayed on social media and twenty-four hour cable channels every day. I see how this affects them. And my students and I, when a situation arises, we talk about these fears. And these fears are part of their reality. As one of the co-presidents of UTAG, I get to talk to teachers all across our district on a frequent basis. These teachers share their concerns about all of the facets of safety mentioned in this referendum, physical safety, monitoring and response time, and especially mental health. The need for additional support in all of these areas continues to grow every year. And by the way, I do want to say that I am, while I'm speaking as one of the co-presidents, I am not speaking on behalf of the teachers. I have been very fortunate to review the items in this referendum and the teachers of Center Grove have not. So I'm not speaking on their behalf, just for me. But finally, as a longtime resident of White River Township and a mother of three Center Grove grads, I have been always so proud of our community and its support of our students and our schools. I am also, however, in the final years of my teaching, some will be sad, some will be exhilarated to hear that, and I am a single earner. I'm single. I have one income. And so I wonder, can I afford the different expenses that are gonna come my way as a result of this referendum? Can I support this referendum, knowing the cost to me? I don't see how I can't. We have to. This is a must-do. So I'd like to thank Dr. Arkhanov for putting this referendum together, and I'd like to thank the board for their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Young.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Young and I am a parent and taxpayer here in Center Grove. I am a Township Advisory Board member for White River Township and I am a teacher for Center Grove Schools. In 2010, I did not support the Center Grove referendum because I did not believe Center Grove was being fiduciary responsible. There were too many gray areas in which the proposed dollars were going to be used. I am someone who spends within my means, and at that time in 2010, I felt Center Grove was spending beyond their means. They had luxury ones on a pa-popper's budget. I come here tonight to speak in favor of the Safety, Security, and Support referendum being presented this evening. There are two reasons for this. One is because it is built around ensuring students and staff will be safe in our growing school district, and two, it is transparent in how the funds will be spent on three areas: monitoring, improved response time, and added mental health with additional classroom support. I am in favor of this referendum because it is proactive in developing a comprehensive solution for future safety needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Good evening. My name is David Lawson. I'm an English teacher at the high school. I'm a graduate of Center Grove Schools. I've put two sons through Center Grove Schools. And I wanted to share just quickly that safety and security is part of our monthly conversations at the high school. We talk about building security. We are, we may be the only building that is open fifty-one weeks out of the year. We invite the public in constantly. We want the public to enjoy what they're paying for, be part of what we do, but at the same time, we do need to ensure for the safety and security of our students. At the high school, I know that we feel, students feel stress, K through twelve, but something happens when they walk into that high school. I think that the stresses of future endeavors, the stresses of college, of jobs, of military choices, I think they tend to intensify. And so, I'm very happy to see the focus on mental health, not just building security. I think it's a wonderful addition. And I too would like to thank you for bringing this referendum and total support of it. I've been in this community a long time, and when I was a high school at that, when I was a student at that high school, I didn't deal with any of the stresses that these kids deal with. And, and I certainly, and am in awe of what they accomplish, given the stresses that they face. So, I think this will go a long way in helping them feel more secure and, and safe in school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Keith Poor.
Thank you. My name's Keith Poor. I'm a taxpayer here in Center Grove area. I guess this is news to me that we're now going to have a tax levy. First thing I knew about it was when I got the agenda on my computer that there was gonna be a tax levy vote here tonight. I know nothing about it. I guess the taxpayers and the community is the last to know that we're going to have a tax, a levy applied to us, or voted on so it can go to the ballot. My comments are, right now, that this administration has trying to build a Cadillac system here, and they have bonded theirsself right into a poorhouse. That's along with my home. Because there, they, right now, if the taxpayers do not know it, we pay sixty cents of every one dollar goes to pay bonds. In other words, we pay salaries, we run this, turn the lights on here, on forty cents of every taxpayer's dollar. That's too, that's too much. We can't live that way. You can't, you can't run your personal budget that way. So how do you think this administration or this school district is going to do it? I have brought this up to every school board member, to every one of the people in the administration that should sit here and say, hey, we don't need a new fire station, police ambulance, or I'm sorry, police station, fire station here that we just voted on for five million dollars last thing, bonded. We bonded five more million dollars for that. You're putting yourself deeper and deeper in debt. Now, I, I'm talking, I don't know much about this referendum. I heard the one lady's talk about safety and the money is gonna be allocated to that. So I don't know what the particulars are about the referendum. So I, but I cannot support a referendum that, that they, that we, we have, we'll just take that money and lead us further and further in debt. Let's pay our debt off and then you'll have money to run this, this corporation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, we have the consent items.
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Arkhanov. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Hubbard. All those in favor, please signify.
Oh, sorry. No one made a motion. We need a motion, sorry. Joe, you wanna make a motion?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Then a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Now then, we go to...
First action item.
Okay. On your agenda this evening, additional corporation hearing and resolutions for public safety building project.
I think you got the wrong agenda here, so.
Should be seven point one.
Yeah, sorry.
Seven point one.
Here it is.
Okay.
There's your first one.
Okay, all right. We'll hold off on that. Under action items...
Seven point one.
Sorry?
Seven point one, there you go.
Okay, seven point one we have on our agenda now is approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand, twenty twenty board and superintendent goals. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm gonna share with you, as the board is aware, we've been working on goals as we've evolved as a corporation over the last nine years now, going on nine years. We've had a separate board and separate superintendent goals. We've had tons of goals in the past and we've whittled those down through strategic planning and so forth. And this year, I'm, I'm proud to share with you the two goals for your approval this evening, and that is goal number one, the school board and the superintendent will use a system that communicates ongoing evidence that data is driving all decisions. As you know, the conversation that we've had around using data, everything from the state data that's been developed and tracked for us through what's currently called Compass for the state and probably is going to change. But using that data as well as what we use locally, student data. We use other data, for example, we track all of our work orders and things like that, and we use the number of work orders and timeliness of that to get done, to make decisions on spending and keeping our material and equipment up to date, as well as we use ongoing systems of evidence and data to make staffing decisions. And of course, our data decisions on budgeting. So that's our first goal. And our second goal is that the school board and the superintendent will implement a roadmap to guide and prepare Center Grove Community School Corporation to serve ten thousand students and beyond. And so, that is the goal, we, you had seen the plan last board meeting at work session, and now we will take that plan and put that in place to grow the school corporation to ten thousand students, which we believe will happen within five years. So I present both of those to you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Arkhanov. Any discussion?
Well, I just think it's, it's, the time has come where the superintendent and the board should be working together with these common goals here. Data-driven is, it may sound like a new term, but it is what's being used at many places. I'm part of Indiana School Board Association. We've turned that board around because of using data with the new executive director that we have. I go to the state's board meetings, same thing is talked about there. Data is the important thing. It's, it gives you your roadmap, so you know what direction you should be going in with that. It is good that we are here in 2019, talking about what is Center Grove gonna look like at ten thousand. That was a number hard for me to swallow, because my family's been around here since the fifties and ten thousand students at Center Grove would have never been thought about back then. But, we're gonna get there quicker than we thought. So, I'm glad these two goals have come about and they, they encompass a lot of things, but yet they're simplistic. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Russell. Further discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion for acceptance?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor, second?
Yeah, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hubbard, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. Motion carried. The next action item is resolution for referendum tax levy. Dr. Arkhanov?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. I'm gonna have a presentation this evening on this. I'll start out by saying, I'm Rich Arkhanov. I'm superintendent here at Center Grove Schools. I'm also a taxpayer that lives in White River Township and I have two children that attend Center Grove. Very proud that they are part of the school district here. So this evening, I'm sharing with you a little bit of what the Safety and Security and Support referendum is about. A couple of things as I go into this and share, this is a process that we really cannot share much until you vote tonight, as to what we take forward. And then once we share it by law, there are restrictions. Again, the school district will be able to do very little to share and promote the referendum. We'll be able to explain it, but promoting it is forbidden by law. So, this evening is our opportunity to just share out with the community why we're proposing a referendum. So, I'll start with the Safe Havens International Audit. You can view this information online. There's some updates on the Safe Havens report. We had a report back in October of 2018 where Safe Havens International Group came in and assessed our school district for safety. While they did that, they identified a lot of positives about our district and what we do well. Just a little background, if you don't know, Safe Havens International is the number one organization in the world that does safety and security assessments of facilities, particularly schools, but they're also, they do other facilities like airports, malls, and movie theaters and so forth. So they've, they were a great group to come in and do an assessment. They, they took several months getting that assessment done and bringing back the information to us. They were very complimentary of things like our, our, our police department and some of the other things that we have put in place across the district to improve safety. But then they also shared with us that we needed to look at some other things. If we wanted to continue to improve our safety and security efforts, we needed to look at what was going on in places like Littleton, Colorado. So we went out to Littleton, Colorado, and took a look at some of the things that happened there and, and what they've put into place. And I'm gonna share with you about that here in just a minute. The other thing that we did was back in March of 2019, we asked the community through something called Thought Exchange, and some of you probably out there took this survey. So the survey basically gave, we asked questions about safety and security and gave everyone an opportunity to put thoughts out there. So, community members wrote very lengthy thoughts and then other community members were able to go in and rate those thoughts and give their own opinions as well. And so, out of these two groups, what we found is a heavy concentration in areas that we needed improvement on, and that was live monitoring, and we'll explain that a little bit, faster response time and deterrence, and then of course, mental health and classroom teacher supports. So, as I share all of that with you, you know, the board and our leadership team, we've discussed the importance of investing in these areas, and we didn't wanna wait to invest in these areas over time. To do some of the things we would need to do would take five, ten, or even fifteen years to get in place. And we wanna get them done now. And the best way to do that is through a tax levy or referendum. And so, we're really working hard to improve those investments and get things like that in place as soon as possible. So what we're talking about is in November fifth, we would like to do a referendum that would be eleven point five cents per one hundred dollars assessed value. It's important to know that this funding would support safety, security, mental health, and classroom supports investments. Couple of things to understand in this area is, these things are not funded. There are no mechanisms in the funding formulas from the state to put any of these particular issues into place and any kind of activities or any staffing in place. And the only way that we can do this is by taking money from the education fund to do that. That's the money we pay teachers out of. So it's really important that everyone understand that there isn't a well, if you will, of money for this type of thing. It's all in one pot. So currently, we have police officers in our department. We have five police officers that support our nine buildings. We use, we use those officers and we pay them out of our education fund. So, there is a cost there. And it's a significant cost. I think it's roughly around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that about right, Paul?
Four ninety.
Four ninety, so about almost five hundred thousand dollars right now. So half a million dollars in, in funds that go towards safety and security coming out of the education fund. We would be able to utilize that money to support our teachers in our classrooms more if we were able to assess a tax levy such as eleven and a half cents. So, what would happen is that this referendum would appear as a question on the ballot and the voters would vote on November fifth. So I wanna break it down for you a little bit. What do you get for eleven and a half cents in White River Township? Well, roughly you get three point one million dollars per year. And how we would like to spend that money? Well, we'd like to, we'd like to do that in three different categories. First, it is mental health and classroom teacher support. A reminder, mental health is a medical issue. It's not special education, is not supported by any education funds. However, it is something we deal with every day, as our teachers shared earlier. And it's getting more and more difficult that we're dealing with the mental health issues in classrooms. It's not going away, so we need the funds to deal with it. Also, teacher classroom support. Not only are we having the, the mental health issues, but also the side effect of that is a lot of behavioral problems. So behavioral problems in the classroom not only affect the kids in the classroom, that, the, the teachers as well, being able to teach. So, we have, we are looking at ways that we can provide more supports in the classroom for mental health and for teacher support, providing them more opportunities to work with, with kids and, and, and provide support to kids. Now, one, one of the things we looked at here is how we can improve in those areas, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more in detail about that in a moment. The next thing is live monitoring. Right now, our camera system is more forensic. If something happens in our corporation, then we look at those cameras after the fact. The most successful way to use video cameras is to live monitor them. When we were out in Colorado, we monitored, we witnessed the monitoring cameras three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four hours a day. And it was an impressive thing to watch, and we learned a lot about how much is saved by doing that. And then the last part is twenty-nine percent being used for faster response time and deterrence. That's basically having more officers and so forth. So, I'll go into it a little bit more detail. As I talk about the first one, which is about thirty-four percent, and that's live monitoring, what we're looking for is additional school safety officers, those are police officers. The board has always had a goal to get at least one police officer per building, to be able to use those police officers to cut down on, on response time to any type of significant event that would happen in a building. Also, additional, did I say that right, safety officers? Yeah, okay, sorry. And additional cameras, particularly something unique that we saw in the other, in other areas, and that is analytical cameras and software. And when we went out, we took, I think Mr. Alexander went with us to, to see this in Colorado, and just to kind of explain, the difference is analytical cameras, while probably ten times the cost of a regular camera, they have very unique skills. For example, a camera, an analytical camera may just sit in the corner of this room and wa- example, a camera, an analytical camera may just sit in the corner of this room and watch and learn this, build this room over time and the behavior. And then, once it's learned the behavior, it's able to then pick up on unusual behaviors in the room. And if someone was to bolt into this room with ill intent, the camera would know that's unusual behavior and zoom in and start taking pictures of the person and automatically email those photos to our police officers and alert them that unusual behavior is happening in a room or in an area corridor. So then they're able to make quick decisions in places they may not even be. So that's just one example. It also, the other thing behind analytical cameras is they communicate with one another. So if someone is doing something here and then running out and going to another area in the building, the camera tells the next camera which way the person is headed, and that camera picks them up at the door, meanwhile notifying all of the authorities the direction of the individual that might be doing some harm. So these analytical cameras are really important. They go along with actually physically live monitoring them to where we can then have someone communicating directly with police officers and other security folks. So live monitoring, as we talked about last week, or last month, I'm sorry, our emergency operations center would house our live monitoring system. It's not just an area for a fire, fire station or a fire truck, if you will. It's really, it's more than that. It would house our live monitoring system. We would put our health services department over there. We would also work with the White River Township and Bargertsville Fire Department to house an ambulance there and then eventually grow that into more fire support. It's a pretty exciting project, and it is a big deterrent as well by having, as we've learned, having that kind of equipment in such a close proximity of a building, of a school building. Last, or the next thing is cybersecurity monitoring and protection. And so I won't pretend to do this so well. I'll let Jason kind of share out about cyber protection.
Yeah, this is something that we started, started doing, and it's something we'd like to do long-term. We did it through a grant with the Indiana Department of Education this past school year. We'd like to make it long-term. And what this does is it protects all of the traffic that flows around our school's network. It monitors and stops active attacks. It also looks back historically for prior attacks that maybe weren't caught and makes sure that we're keeping all of our students' records and data as safe as possible. And I think this is a quality solution to get us there.
Yeah. And it's really important. A lot of people don't realize it, but a five-year-old's data is pretty valuable to an identity thief because they can steal the identity and then destroy the person's credit, and they won't even know it until they're 18 or 20, and by then, that thief is long gone. So Jason and his team do a really good job of working hard to protect that data, but it's a, it's a growing issue and more and more needs. Bus stop arm cameras. If you haven't been aware of, running bus stop arms has become a really huge problem in our state. And so we've been dealing with that. We experience that on a weekly basis, and so we need some way to react to that. So we're working with the prosecutor's office, hopefully, that when we do identify individuals through camera, stop on cameras, we will be able to then, you know, press charges against those individuals. And hopefully, that will be a deterrent for people running bus stops, bus arms. So those are things in live monitoring. And then next, and I'll go to faster responses. Now, some of the things I'm not sharing with you are for confidential reasons. As you know, in safety and security, there are things that you don't want people to know you do. So there are some things that I'm leaving out that are probably not going to be shared with the greater community for the protection of the school district. Faster response time and deterrence. So how can we improve in that area? And that is adding additional school resource officers. So the other individuals on the previous page that I shared are not police officers. They're security officers, and they're responsible for doing more of the supervision, monitoring cameras, and so forth. They're not trained police officers who carry weapons. These officers are school resource officers, police officers. We have five of those today, and we would like to continue to increase those till we have nine for, for the corporation, one per building to keep going in that area.
You might add, that's not just for reaction, but for pre-education.
Yes. So, yeah, they do a lot. Not just, not are they just there reacting to situations, but they train and work with students and drug prevention and suicide prevention. They're all, they're, they're a much bigger part than just walking around and being a security guard. They work with our kids. We have three police dogs that also work with our kids, and the three police dogs are probably our three best interrogators because they, the kids sit with the dogs because the dogs are friendly. Dr. Long's done a great job of selecting dogs that were kid-friendly. So the kids get really comfortable and open up to the dog, and the police officer who's sitting there gets all the information he or she needs, which can be very helpful at times. The other thing is lockdown alert systems. So when we were visiting Detroit schools, there's something called Blue Point. There's other companies, but Blue Point is a system that anyone can pull. It looks like a fire, a fire pull station, and you can pull it if, in the event that there's something bad happening, it automatically puts the whole building down on lockdown. It then starts the system of taking pictures, setting the analytical cameras off, and guiding, you know, folks to areas in need, but also guiding folks out of the building as well. So it's an interesting system. We watched it in action. It's very successful up in a couple of different districts. The one that I visited was in Detroit. And this was a school district called Bloomfield Hills, which is almost identical to us. So this wasn't an inner-city school district. This was, this was a suburban school district, almost identical to us. And another thing that we're looking at is emergency alert systems. So these would be pendants that staff members would wear, and they also then could put the building on lockdown as well in the event that they were to come upon some danger and realizing that, you know, the building needed to go into a lockdown. All of this is about faster response time. If you think about a teacher who, you know, who's wearing a pendant and someone walks in intending to do harm, and the first thing they do is press that, and that's instant notification to, to all those, which would work with our live monitoring system and help us cut down on the loss of life and injury. So the last part is the, sorry, is the mental health and classroom supports. And this is a larger portion of, of the referendum. This part is about helping with mental health services, such as social workers, counselors, adding more of those, individuals to our, to our staff, getting more support with classroom behavior support across all grade levels. So what we're looking at is a little bit of a model that would add classroom support, such as what we call paraprofessionals. We would love to add more teachers. One of our problems, as you know, is we just don't have the space. So adding actual teachers to lower class sizes would be very difficult for us. We'd have to open up another building, maybe two. So adding extra hands of support for the teachers when they're dealing with the difficult behaviors has become critical for us. So we're looking at a significant ask for that as well. And then, finally, additional staff focusing on social-emotional learning. This would actually be teachers. We're looking at, I believe, is it six teachers? Jason? Yeah, six. So we're looking at six teachers that would be added across the district at the elementary level to help with social-emotional learning. This is a more proactive approach to support that, those areas. So what, what does this mean to a taxpayer? Basically, what we're looking at is it's about 11 and a half cents, it is 11 and a half cents, per $100 assessed value, which if you owned a $200,000 home, that would be $9.37 a month, or $112 per year. We have, will, obviously would adjust based on your home value and based on how you filed your exemptions on your home. Could be less, it could be more. So I'm going to let Dr. Gabriel talk to you about the board resolution that you'll be asked to approve this evening, so.
So this process begins by the board passing a resolution, which we have available to you this evening. After the various whereas paragraphs, it includes seven sections, and I was just going to run through those very quickly.
Get my area.
Section one establishes the estimated levy, which we've estimated to be $3,105,000 per year. This would begin in 2020 and extend for eight, a total of eight years. This is an estimate because we don't know what the assessed value will be in 2020. So until we know that, this remains an estimate. Section two establishes the ballot question, and this is the board's recommendation of what the question should be. It's primarily prescribed by the state, and you see the 11 and a half cents in there, and really, there's nothing that we can control or recommend except for the last four lines that says, "The purpose of this is for live monitoring of facilities, improved security response time and deterrence, and added mental health and additional classroom support for students." So that's the part of this question that we have any control over. The rest of it is all pretty much predetermined by the state. And then the last three sections describe what the next steps will be in the process. This begins by the board voting on this resolution this evening. And then, after that, the board would submit the resolution to the DLGF. That's the Department of Local Government Finance. This is the state agency that, that monitors all of our tax, various parts of our taxes. And the DLGF may require some adjustments to the question. They, they have their own requirements, and, and we've worked with our attorney, and we believe that those adjustments would be minor, hopefully none at all in the way we've recommended it. But they could require some adjustments, and, and after that, then we would submit this question to the county election board and put that on the ballot for November 5th of this year. So that's what the resolution is that we're asking you to approve this evening.
So finally, I'll share just a couple of things with you. Is there is a website that you can go to, which is basically www.centergrove.k12.in.us/safercg. And maybe we could go to that for a minute while, while Pam is opening that up. I'll share that that website has more detailed information about the referendum and the details behind it, including a tax calculator and other information on, on each of the investments are available there. This information can, can be there on the website as it is informative. It is not promoting in any way. It's just informing you. There's also a letter there this evening about, about this project as well from me and additional information. Once the board votes on this tonight, and if you approve it, it will become a ballot question, and we will then begin working through what we call a PAC or Political Action Committee. And in the audience this evening with us is a young lady who has agreed to take on the challenge, Ms. Bo-Rat, right, right here. Lisa, would you like to say anything before I move on? Yeah, absolutely.
I like the young lady part, just when I'm working.
So Lisa's, Lisa's, as she comes up to the microphone, Lisa's a parent in the district, and I believe you're at middle school. No, you can ready go to high school now.
We're going to high school, God.
She's going to high school, folks, so.
Bless me. Prayers, everyone, please.
Watch out.
Incoming freshmen, coming. Yes, yes, yes. So thank you. I'll make it short and sweet. I am a parent, most importantly and foremost. That's why I'm here. I think it's why all of us are here. We all wear many hats. And my hat tonight really is to say, I am here to support this, obviously, I believe very passionate in this referendum. In addition to be a mom and a volunteer and a PTO president and everything else I do in Center Grove, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm a licensed therapist. I teach at the Graduate School of Social Work, teach clinical practice. Professional, I'm a former paramedic. Professionally, I can tell you, this has been long, long overdue in Center Grove. We desperately need to provide these services for our students. We need to give resources to our staff. We need to deter the violence that's out there. We need to provide every opportunity for our kids to succeed. I totally agree with the gentleman that spoke earlier. I don't want my taxes to go up either financially, but you know what? I look at these numbers, and I can not eat out twice a month because to me, that's worth it, in my opinion. It's worth it to see our, our kids have the safety and security. Every day, my daughter, her friends, the teachers I talk to, somebody is talking about safety and security. Fear's out there. Home life, the, the psychosocial impact of divorce and trauma and everything else that's happening in our kids' lives, it is new compared to when I went to school. We can't ignore that. And our teachers don't have the time, the capacity, or the resources to keep doing this. So when Dr. Arkonoff called me a couple of weeks ago, I rarely tell him no, but this one, I absolutely said yes. And I think when they first announced this, when I had the privilege of doing the ambassador program, I got to see some, what this was coming. I knew when I studied and I, you know, the, the feedback and I read all the comments. So I was in Stacy's face. I was in Richard's face. The yes, we need this. So I'm proud and happy to do this. I told him I'm not a fundraiser, but I'm a passion raiser. So find somebody that can raise the money, and I will, I will help tell the story. So I hope those of you that are not sure about it, that want to know more, please look, please talk, please ask. They're very transparent with the need for this, and the facts are there. And I can honestly say, as a clinician, there is no greater importance to our students and our future. So I hope you'll join me in supporting it.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I believe, as you see the websites in front of you, you can scroll down just a little bit, Pam. You can see, you click on those links there. All those blocks are interactive, and you click on them, and you can get more information about those areas. So Stacy, again, great job on putting this all together for us today. So with that, I will then turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Arkonoff. Any further questions from any member of the board? This is your time to present those questions.
Well, I just have a couple of comments. As you guys know, Rob is not able to make it tonight. He's not here with us, but he did ask, send me a statement, asked me to read it on his behalf, and it's honored to do that for him. He basically wants me to say that he is sorry you could not attend this meeting tonight. That's him right there. Safety, security, mental health, and additional ability support are all important issues schools must deal with today. We do a, we do a good job. However, the additional funds raised through this referendum will allow us to do a better job. For this reason, I support the proposed referendum. Rob Daniels.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to us from Mr. Daniels. Any other comments or questions?
I have one more personally. I'd just like to add that I, I do support the referendum, and I'm okay asking the community to help invest in our students and employee safety, and more importantly, the overall physical and mental health of, of all of our students. We have students right now that feel isolated and disconnected in all of our schools, and I feel personally that this referendum could help that. And I would just hate myself if something was to happen at one of our schools and, and I didn't push this on to the community for you guys to vote on it. So I, I think it's in everybody's best interest, the community is that, that we need to support this and support our kids, and we owe it to them to do it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Other comments?
Okay. Well, just a few quick things. As I've said earlier, I attend several different meetings at the state level. One thing that needs to be reminded is that we are 276th out of 289 schools for the funding we get from the state because they consider us whatever it is, and it's the way the formula works. As we all know, these issues are countrywide. Until Columbine, we never even thought we would need anything like this or have anything like this happen in our schools, which the several seminars I've attended and what we've talked with at ISBA and even at the state board is the term, "It's not if, but when." That just chills my bones every time they say that, thinking that that couldn't happen here at Center Grove, somewhere else, but not here at Center Grove. Well, it can, unfortunately. So we have to do everything we can. unfortunately. So, we have to do everything we can to be prepared, to do prevention. So much has been, things up until the last really couple of years, has been how to react, how to react, how to react. And finally, we have some studies, and one of them was done with us. What are the prevention things to be done? And it does go back down. Some of you may know I was an elementary teacher, but I also subbed K through 12 a lot over the years, enjoyed it. But, elementary is where you want to try and capture some of these behaviors that start showing up in the kids there, before it becomes so ingrained in them. Their anger issues, their different ways of looking at things. You want to catch it down there, thus the need for the extra help down in the elementary level. The quick response time of saving lives. We are now in the partnership with the different sheriffs, the sheriff and the fire departments, having them as close as possible. Not to be gory, but what happens a lot of times in shootings is someone is alive, but they bleed out. So, the quicker that someone can get to them, the more we can save lives in the unfortunate situation of this happening. So, yes, we're a growing school district. We are trying to change things and be prepared. We've talked about that we're growing to 10,000 in the next couple of years. We have to be prepared for that, and that does mean continuing go bonds and having those things going on. But, the legislator, state's legislator, has really put it on to the backs of school boards to go to the community and raise those extra funds. And some of it, it's okay, because every community has some different needs. So, I see some of that a little bit. But, it does become our responsibility, and the avenue that they've provided for us is a referendum situation on that one. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. As I know the board's aware, one of my additional board responsibilities is I'm an advisory member to the Greenwood Redevelopment Commission. And as part of that, Mayor Myers has asked me to read a letter on behalf of him tonight. He's actually traveling on behalf of the city of Greenwood tonight. But, "Dear Richard Arkonoff and Center Grove School Board, I'd like to express my personal support for the referendum being proposed for the school. Safety and security, as we look at the unfortunate way society has been ever-changing over the past 1 to 20 years. Safety is becoming necessary on every front. As the Center Grove school system continues to grow, the risk and possibility of school violence are going to rise. As I look at the statistics for the Greenwood Police Department each year, the number of calls for service arises. Along with that, the number of violent incidents arise, has risen as well. As we watch our televisions each night, we see violence rising not only throughout our own state, but also our nation and the entire world. It is because of this society we're living in now, we must be proactive and look to the future for securing the buildings where our children spend a third of their lives. I also believe that with the higher numbers of mentally disturbed people we have in our world, we must be proactive with them and provide the experts in the mental health field that can reach out to our children and help them get past certain stages in our life and become better citizens in our community. I ask that you please support the efforts of the Center Grove School Administration and approve the referendum so all residents can have the opportunity to express their support for this initiative. Sincerely, Mark W. Myers, Mayor, City of Greenwood." I wish that school funding was as simplistic as 60 cents of every dollar goes here, and goes to pay bonds, and 40 cents goes to paying everything else. And at the 50,000-foot level, that's probably pretty accurate. But, that isn't the reality in which we live in, in which how schools are designed to be funded, and how we are designed to ask for money and go and get money. And I wish it was as simple as that, once you got down to the practical level of how do we pay for things. As most of you are aware, the process is very important to me, and has been for the last decade since I've been a member of this board. And the process that we went through to get to where we are tonight has been a lot of conversation, has been a lot of, is this, is this absolutely what we have to have? There's not a luxury item in here. There was a lot of conversation. There was a lot of ideas thrown around to arrive at what I believe is a very, very transparent and open and honest conversation about where we are from a mental health standpoint in our schools, where we are from a safety and security standpoint. Being a former firefighter for the better part of 19 years, I can tell you, it's all about response time, hands down. It doesn't matter, doesn't matter what it is. It's all about the response time. EMTs are taught the golden hour rule for a trauma. The general rule of thumb is you got an hour to get them treated and to a trauma center. That's, I mean, that's just ingrained in every one of us, right, Mike? And as we continue to look at society and how things have changed, and we've got to adapt and adjust with the times. We've, Dr. Arkonoff and I, over the years, have had many conversations around this. And we don't always, we don't always agree. We agree to disagree at times, but, what? Yeah, that's amazing. But, from a safety and security standpoint, and where we are from a society standpoint, Center Grove's probably a little bit behind. The trip to Littleton, Colorado, we learned a tremendous amount about, and the school district we visited was less than 20 minutes from Columbine, less than 10 minutes from the Aurora Theater shooting. So, I mean, this is, this is a community that gets it. And fortunately for them, the state of Colorado has also put together a funding and a state support hotline for people who are having concerns and issues. And when a student calls in, the Littleton School District has a practice in place that they've got school resources on that student's doorstep within two to four hours of the phone call coming in, 365 days a year, no questions, no questions asked. Where, I don't know, we'll ever maybe get to that model, but there are, I think, a lot of examples out there that we can learn from and react to and do what makes sense for Center Grove. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all. I applaud Dr. Arkonoff for going to different school districts to gain different insights and ideas. We chose school districts that are similar to our demographic. The trip to Littleton, our friends at Clark Pleasant went with us. And there, the Littleton School District is about the same size as Clark Pleasant and Center Grove together, if you combine our two school districts together. And, you know, we were talking with the Clark Pleasant Board members as well about, you know, things we have put into place, and they just passed this safety and security referendum as well, I think in the spring. And their comment was, even once we pass this, we're still catching up to where you guys are, and we feel like we're behind. So, schools are woefully behind, and there's, you know, a myriad of reasons for that, so.
False sense of security.
False sense of security, that's a good way to put it, Mr. Russell.
Okay. Thank you for the comments. Any further comments, Mr. Russell?
Well, just one. How far back do you think that you really started working on all of this information? Just four years?
Probably, no, no, no. Probably about seven years ago.
So, this is, this is not a brainstorm situation?
No. And to be honest, the district and the board has been really good about the things we have done, such as our police department, our anonymous reporting system, and just a myriad of other things. When the board, you know, went and did the $42 million worth of work to secure all the vestibules in the corporation across the board, so every building in the corporation is safe from the standpoint of that entry system. And then, the other things that we've done that, you know, obviously, we don't share. But, all of those things that have been put into place are just steps in the right direction. But, when you, like, when Mr. Alexander shared, when you go out and you see someplace like Littleton, Colorado, and see, well, wow, what else we really should be doing and need to do, and as Mr. Hubbard shared, I wouldn't, I want to, you know, do everything I can for the kids today. And I would feel really awful if I didn't at least ask our community to take on that responsibility with us, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I think you have.
All right. Hearing no further comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Would you please speak?
I'll make a motion to approve the safety, security, and support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. The motion has been made.
I'm sorry. Could you restate it to say, approve the resolution for the referendum?
I move we approve the resolution of referendum tax levy as presented.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, do you continue to second that? All right. Motion has been made in second to approve the referendum tax levy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, we will inform the clerk's office tomorrow, Monday?
It goes to the DLGF tomorrow.
Okay, goes to DLGF tomorrow, and the process has officially begun.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Gabriel, for that.
Thank you all.
Okay. Moving on, we are to the point where we will ask for approved rollover of administrator and director's contracts. Dr. Arkonoff?
Thank you, Mrs. Toomey. This evening, I'm recommending the board roll over the administrative contracts starting July 1 of 2019. And Dr. Gabriel has some additional information to share with you.
Board members have a recommendation for rolling over administrative contracts that are currently in effect. Each person on this list is an administrator or a director with a contract that expires on June 30 of 2020 or later. This recommendation will establish a new contract effective July 1, 2019, for each administrator and director that is one year longer than their current contract. There are no changes in salary or any other contract provisions that are being made at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Any questions, comments? All right. Hearing none, do I hear a motion for the approval of the rollover of administrator and director contacts, contracts?
Madam President, I move that we roll over administrative contracts for administrators and directors as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Motion has been made in second to approve the rollover of administrators and directors' contracts. Do I hear a voice vote?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have other business to come before the board this evening?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Russell?
As usual, you have the agendas from the meetings I've attended this past month. Just real quick, at the state board level, there still is pretty major conflict between what the state thinks and what the federal thinks how great should be handed out to schools. And it doesn't look like it's going to be resolved anytime real soon. So, it's just an unfortunate situation we're going to have to put up with on that one. For alumni and friends, we are planning a football homecoming, where hopefully one ticket will get you a tour and meal and a ticket to the game, hopefully in a specialized area there. Hopefully, we can grow this from year to year and into a football homecoming weekend on that one. We are also working on Alumni and Friends Hall of Fame. Jason Mueller has been working on that and getting closer to what that's really going to look at, look like in the future on that one. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any other business to come before the?
As I mentioned earlier, one of my additional board responsibilities is the Greenwood Redevelopment Commission. There's a lot of exciting things happening over in the city of Greenwood right now with the Cummins announcement. That will have a direct impact on Central Nine as well. There was a million-dollar commitment made to bolstering the programs at Central Nine as part of that agreement with Cummins. They're still trying to iron out the details there, but pretty exciting announcement. I think it's projected to be 500 jobs coming to the city of Greenwood. And then, the city is continuing to expand its bikeways and pathways and those types of things. So, they're continuing to buy property down Madison Avenue to continue the expansion of the bike path they've put in. So, lots of exciting things going on over in the city of Greenwood, and I encourage everybody to go over and check it out.
All right. Any other business or announcements?
I believe one announcement would be the, correct me if I'm wrong, is it August 3 that we're going to do a community open house for?
That's correct.
Walnut Grove, yes. Yes. August 3, community open house for Walnut Grove in dedication at 1 o'clock.
August 3.
August 3.
August 3.
I really encourage everyone to put that date on your schedule and go attend that open house. This building is absolutely fascinating, and I know that you will come away saying, "My gosh, you know, what a great place for our students to be as they grow and become professionals themselves." It's awesome, and it's right down 450, and you can get a good view from it right now. So, don't hesitate to kind of take a peek before the date of the announcement. Okay. Anything else from any of the board members, Dr. Arkonoff?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Anything else over here? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
(laughing) Motion has been made in second to adjourn. I declare this meeting adjourned. adjourned.
Did you snuff?
I don't think so.
Yeah, you don't.
I don't think so.
That's a good idea.
Does it? Is it the three of us?
I have two questions I want to ask you.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, is that, what is that?
I think it's a fundraiser.
I took two a week last night.
Yeah.
No, it's really cool.
Sorry.
Do they pull a couple of boats down to?
Depends on who has boats and everybody.
Well, I used to take my boat. Martha takes his boat.
Yeah, I sometimes do.
So, what will you come?
Okay.
It's not just like that.
So, you heard, so are you still?
Passing.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Okay, fantastic. Yeah, Embell, like I said, we've got a list of different pools.
Check.
Unfortunately, we can't have bad on school property, so I'll set it up.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.